First on my agenda is to approve the minutes. Y'all have a chance to look them over and if you have, I entertain a motion.
Take the motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Kissling.
No, second in.
Second by Downs, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Same as far as the approval of claims, I entertain a motion whenever you're ready.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Tim.
I'll make a second one.
Second by Jose, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. First part of business this evening basically is, we all know that Mr. Meyer-Holz has retired, basically retiring from the city, and so in order to name a replacement for him, the foreman at that particular water treatment plant right now is Jerry Austin. He's one of the two that Gary had actually recommended for his position. So I was basically waiting for the council to prove my recommendation of making him superintendent as far as the water treatment plant.
I'll make a recommendation.
Okay, by Tim. Do I have a second?
No, sir.
Second by Glenn, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So be it.
Congratulations Jerry, by the way. Now you can get report later.
That's official.
It's official.
Next thing on agenda, I think I gave each of you the three proposals as far as the roof that we went over last time when we were here. Obviously, we need to make the decision. My recommendation for that after looking at it and all the things that we've been over the other time when we were here was to use Hedinger, but that's up to you guys as far as your estimation is concerned.
I'd sent an email to the mayor shortly after, looking at him, and that was my suggestion as well, to get the five year longer extended warranty. I think we have enough insulation up there that we really don't need another two inches of insulation, so the insulation they're proposing would be fine, and it would be more foot traffic friendly as well.
I looked at these three separate quotes and find them to be several things that are not apples for apples per se, and I had some questions on that. And it looks like we're getting, we got about 25 years out of our original roof. Is that correct? This building put in 90s.
It was replaced once.
Replaced once? How long ago?
Fifteen years ago.
So... And do we know who did that?
I think it was Hedinger.
Hedinger.
Or Schmidt, I think it was Schmidt. I was gonna look that up.
Well, that being said, my question is, right now, the only people that have looked at the roof are the people providing the bids?
No, they've all actually looked at the roof.
The people that are providing the bids that looked at the roof?
Yes.
Have, has the city had an engineer or somebody come up and determine what we need before we do that?
Not that I know of, we just had people, because it's been leaking so often and repairing so often, the fact that we just had the roofing companies come here to give us estimates as far as repairs are concerned and replacing it. And it was actually, if I remember correctly, it was put in the budget already to do that already this year, if I remember correctly.
I'm not gonna, yeah, I'm not questioning the, I'm not questioning the amount, and I'm not questioning the companies involved here. I'm questioning that we don't, we've not had a disinterested party look at our roof and tell us what we should be doing for the longest service life. You know, if I wanna get another, if I'm gonna get 15 years out of it, I do this, like if 25 years out of it, I do that. And we have a, we have a city engineer on retainer, do we not Phil? Let's, I can't remember the, I can't remember the name, this saved my soul.
Cash Wagner?
Cash Wagner, I mean,
Several of them actually.
Wouldn't it, somebody, somebody that would, who's disinterested, I mean, they're not, their only interest would be to give us, you know, advice on what would be the best for our roof, what would last the longest, the difference between the insulations. Frankly, 'cause I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm doing this for my own house right now, and I have just as many questions at home as I got for this. So, I mean, that's, that's my personal opinion.
Oh, you have to fill out a spec sheet to say this is what needs to go on, let anybody bid on what they recommend?
What I'm saying, you know, do we need 45, do we need 60? Is there a, is there a 80? I don't know what there is. And that, you know, half insulation, inch insulation, no insulation, two inch, two inches of insulation. I'm not trying to take anybody, take any of the bidders out of this, I just would like to know what is, what it would be the best overall use of the taxpayer money to get this fixed once and right and have it done. If it, if it takes $35,000 or $52,000 is not the question here. The question is what was gonna last the longest, give us the best service life, and, you know, be the best use of the funds we're appropriating here. That's my question. I, I can't make that decision based on looking at these three proposals, but...
Seems, seems like it would make sense. What would be involved with having Cash Wagner to come up with some specs and then ask each of the, each of the previous bidders or people who've given us estimates to, to meet those specifications and give us a price on, so that each of the, each of the quotes are exactly the same, you know, so apples to apples to apples, as opposed to different mills and different insulation?
Well, I think we discussed that at the last meeting, though, they, we asked them questions and things of that type when they were here, and I think they pretty much answered those questions when we asked it of them as far as what the differences were between the insulation, the half inch of this or two inches of this. So I meant, it's kinda like, you know, we can, we can ask more questions, I guess. We wanna have somebody come and look at the roof, and other than a roofer, I don't know, it's, it's a matter of, it's their business. They all three basically said we needed a new roof, not that, obviously, they're, they're gonna do roofing, obviously, but, you know, I would've thought that we had 30 days, or we had two weeks actually to look into this probably already, but if we wanna wait until we see, get an engineer up here to look at it, that's fine with me. I mean, we're not, every time it rains, it leaks, so, and it's not gonna get any better, that's for sure, so it's up to you guys, it's your, it's your decision, so...
I do point out that yours apparently is the apparent low bidder, disregarding any differences in specs, but they have a little bit more onus payment schedule, they want one-third upfront when you accept and one-third when they start, and balance upon completion, as opposed to Hedinger, who's the second lowest bid, who just requires payment upon acceptance.
And that was part of my reasoning as well, I said to Mayor an email about my opinion, that was part of my reasoning for Hedinger as well. In my opinion, the high density insulation is the better way to go. We've got four inches up there, if I remember what they told us correctly, so, and putting another two inches, what's enough's enough. And that dense, that two inch insulation is as dense, so when you walk onto foot traffic, it is gonna show possibly some impressions. With this high density product you're talking about, it could be a stickerboard, therefore they won't get that. I mean, I sort of agree with what you're saying, we've got all different kinds of bids, different options, but they sorta all end up in the same area with the roof and product to six oh millimeters, the way I would recommend going, it's a heavier product, and Hedinger gave you a five year longer warranty.
As I say, it's not rocket surgery.
Does it seem, you know, I guess in my mind, I've admitted, I'm coming at this from a largely uneducated position on these flat roofs, 'cause I've never been involved in this before, but it seems 15 years is a really short life. Is that, is not, that's not...
The products change over periods, products change over periods of time, newer technology product comes out. I mean, I can tell you the building I'm in for 46 years, that floor, if you put on it, it is, it's a roof, you know?
And that may not have been a full replacement, because you're talking about doing a full replacement for everything.
Right, not the, both the upper and the lower both, yeah.
I just know we have a guarantee, and that time has elapsed.
Hedinger's a 20 year, right?
Yes, yeah, Hedinger had a 20 year.
I'll do whatever the council decides.
When this was, was this put out like just an announcement to the community or the public that we were accepting bids, or did we make specific calls to these three?
We contact, no, we contacted several places, and these are the three that actually came back with it. We actually called different locations, and these are the three that actually decided to come in and give a bid on it, I guess.
Any maintenance work under $150,000, you're not required to go out for general bids, you can solicit, you have to at least request three firms known to do that type of business to provide, even if you only receive two or one, as long as you've requested at least three.
If I remember correctly, these were the three of the more local ones that we had, I mean, there's just not all people do flat roofs, to be honest with you. Gable roof, shingles and things, yeah, you can get a lot of those different bids from that, but on a flat roof, it's a little different situation, so, these are the ones that obviously responded back and came and looked at the roof and gave us the bids basically upon what they thought was necessary, so... But once again, it's, it's your all's call, I'll do whatever you all want me to do.
What do you guys feel comfortable doing?
I'm sorry?
What do you feel comfortable doing?
I don't have a problem with it either way, but if it was my own, I would want to know exactly that I'm doing, making the right decision, so, I mean, I don't know that I'm not making the right decision, okay? Like I said, I don't know the difference, I don't have any, I don't have a dog in this fight between these three companies, so, I don't know whether one is, they're all, they're all, at least two of them I know have been here for many, many years, so I don't have any issues with that, so, but...
We can have a long table, one more meeting, and then go from there, and see what they can do.
How long would this all take? I mean, it doesn't matter to me if you guys decide to go and have a bid, but you're coming into the rainy season, the roof's leaking, I don't know how Hedinger can get on it, but...
Any of them say?
It's leaked for several years, I can tell you that, right Tom?
Different places, yeah.
Did any of them say when they could start?
No, we never really asked them until we actually give them whatever, I mean, I mean, we could certainly ask them that. They all three pretty much, you know, well, as soon as we had the leak, you know, Hedinger came and fixed the leak when we called to do that, the other two came right away when we asked them to come get bids, that doesn't mean that they'll get right on it right away as far as the actual repair work is concerned or replacement, but, but we could certainly find out how if you want me to.
One of the bids does reserve the right to withdraw the bid, except within 30 days. The bid is dated 3/24.
My move, I'd make a motion to table the bids until we have a disinterested party review what's needed on the roof, and come back and try to have that done by the next meeting. That's, that's what I would vote, that's what I would propose, that's what I would make a motion toward.
So there's the motion on the table, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. I'll get a hold of our engineer and see if he can get over here and take a check, you know, have him look at it and see, make sure that it's totally in need of a new roof.
I'm not, I'm not questioning that it needs a new roof, I'm gonna make sure that we get the right, the right product, the right warranty, the right, you know, whatever, the right amount of insulation.
All right.
I'm not a commercial builder.
Yeah, I think, I think from my perspective, what I'm looking for is the engineer to say, this is what it needs, and then we ask companies again, meet in those specifications to give us an estimate, so that we, so that we can really choose the, the one that's most economical and has the best terms and all that.
And if it fits whatever they bid in, they might just leave the bid alone, or, you know, they can adjust it too if they want to, so, it's tough looking at three different bids with three different solutions over, short speak. And it's harder to price.
Okay, all right. All good or done? Thanks. On agenda is the vacation of the city property, I think if y'all had a chance to look that over.
Yeah, by, as a matter of preference, Tom Dibble received a petition from Tim Ware and Steve Punn to, landowners along South Sycamore Street, asking to vacate a portion of South Sycamore Street, it's about 114 foot section between Second Avenue and Dead Ends on property that's owned by Tim Ware. And it's not, never been approved, it's never been maintained by the city. Of course, since Mr. Ware is a petitioner, he would have to recuse himself from considering this, but the process is, within 30 days after you receive the petition, you're required to set up for a public hearing, give notice of the public hearing, and then make a decision on the petition after that public hearing. Your next meeting would be June 8th, and that would be enough time to, I believe that would be enough time to advertise with it, Tom?
There you go, I just put it in. This is the color picture of the stuff in there. The subdivision where I live in had a right of way, had it set up for a street to go past my house, through my backyard, and joining the other Sycamore Street. I own the whole acre in the back, so there's no right of way on that, and the BZA has given me permission to build a garage in my backyard, and this right of way for the street will go straight to my garage, so the city, I don't see a city ever having a need for that, to put a street through there, since they already gave me permission to put a garage where the street could've been, but since that's a vacated lot now, and I've been maintaining this piece of property for 30 years, I thought I would like to take access to that and put a driveway through it, on it.
And pay taxes?
And pay taxes on it too, by the way, here's, here's the color section of it.
So they're split in half?
Yeah, Mr. Punn's gonna take his, this is 60 feet wide, so he's gonna take his 30, and I'm gonna take my 30, and we both in maintaining that area, that's all I thought.
Which is basically what it has to be when there's a vacated property, it has to split half and half.
Yeah.
Any vacated right of way is divided between the abiding orders on either side, so...
So we just basically need a motion to go ahead with a notice of public hearing, is that correct? So that's the only motion we need this evening as far as that type of thing is concerned.
I got it down, it's June 8th, 5:30, public hearing.
I'll make a motion to have a public hearing on June 8th at 5:30.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing, June 8th, 5:30.
Thank you.
Next item has to do with the water tracker notice we've received from Patoka that they're having their increase as far as the water rate that we're purchasing from them, and so there've been obviously conversations going back and forth with our engineers, Crow mentioned, I think you've got copies of all that in your board pack. Once again, we just need to set up a public hearing to make sure everybody's in agreement with that.
Yeah, the, Patoka increase is announced to 25 cents per thousand gallons purchased. When that, when our purchases are weighted against what we produce, that would result in a, just a hair over 10 cents per thousand gallons on our water cr, water tracker. Now, we already have a tracker for the last increase data back in 2016, I think, that's 26 cents per thousand gallons, so this would, this, this additional 10 cents would take it up to 36.09 cents per thousand gallons. And, and the process is that you introduce an ordinance tonight and set up for a public hearing, Tom publishes notice and sends notice to all customers outside of the city limits. There is an ordinance that's attached in your board pack that would increase the water cost tracker by 10.09 cents per thousand gallons.
So as I understand it, Patoka's raising their rates, and we're just adjusting to...
We're just passing it on. Nothing added to it, we're just passing it across the board, same, the same charge to out, outside city limits as the inside city limits, same charge to industrial users as to residential users, street across the board.
The average customer, if I remember right from previous conversations, uses about 4,000 gallons a month?
That's correct.
So we're looking at about 40 cents?
Yeah.
Per customer? Okay.
So we just need a motion to approve the ordinance and then?
Actually, I have a motion to introduce and number that ordinance, and then to set up for a public hearing on June 8th.
Okay. 2021-17. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, we just need to set up the public notice, so I need a motion to set up a public notice up for next meeting.
I'll make a motion for a public notice on June 8th at 5:30. And not shoot, yeah, June 8th, 5:30.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. I think the last meeting, we had John Wenzel here from Midwestern Engineers, and he had mentioned that there might be one or two different other change orders still coming through as far as the water treatment plant. What we have here is just basically the, the change order for the addition of the $3,519, which I think he even mentioned something about that last meeting when we were here.
Reynolds Construction contract?
Yes. So I just need a motion to approve the change order number four with Reynolds Construction based upon what we were told last time when he was here, so...
I'll make that motion as well.
Second by Downs?
I'll second it.
Second by Ware, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. Next on the agenda is our new water superintendent, Mr. Austin. Come up to the podium if you'd like to, or the podium's backwards, I guess.
It is backwards, isn't it? It's been my first one, so bear with me. Guess I just ran down through my list of things we've been doing. Our distribution system, we had a few, few water main valves, a few water main breaks. Replaced a service line at 804 Oak Street, had a hole in the copper line. The water main valve at Fifth and Geiger, the bolts on the old valves used to not be stainless, all the new construction's stainless now, so we had to dig it up, replace all the bolts with stainless bolts, took care of that problem. We've had four new water services this month, and four of our employees went to in-service training at French Lick for their hours, for their water certifications. The filter plant, it's really coming along, we're pretty much done, they're gonna be coming back this Friday to button up a few small things, but the concrete drive that was talked about last meeting is complete. Our sodium pentamete issue with the backflow has been fixed with that change order, they've got the valve in place, and it's working properly. We've got a dam inspection coming up, it's gonna happen this Thursday, so we've been doing a lot of improvement to our dam to get our rating up on that, we've got a high-risk dam. And then also with the filter plant, the pack machine for the carbon, we were having issues with it, ended up being a faulty pressure valve that's taken care of and in working order now, and today we got our Myox machine connected to our Skada machine, and it's all working correctly as well. As far as the meter system goes, there's one stale read today, and it's reading flawlessly, we're still installing water meters, we've got around 300 more to install before all of our residential meters are done.
What's a Myox machine?
Uh, Myox, it makes our, a hyperchlorinate for our water, pretty much chlorine, it's a 12% solution, so...
We just purchased that, didn't we, not too long?
Yep, we, then we purchased two of them.
Okay, cool.
Four new services, are they all due construction?
Yeah. Yeah, all in the Jago area.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
You did good, it's your first time.
Yeah, thank you.
We were easy on them.
Wait till the next, wait till the next.
Then I'll start asking you for stuff.
All right, how are you this evening?
I'm pretty good. All righty, start off in the gas department. They put three new services in this month, mostly at Jago homes out here, got four on file. Month, last month, they removed two regulator stations in Huntingburg here, they let the ground settle some, so they went out and seeded and brought, filled in some dirt and then put some straw on it, so that's all done. Then there's a regulator station over west of Jasper, the intersection of Clemper and Division. It was an old one, not in use anymore, so we took that one out, took a lot of welding over there. At one time it was needed when there was just a, that was the only feed into this area, but over the years, as that area's built up, where we've been able to tie in on the low side at different places, so that wasn't needed anymore, so we took that out. And we're gonna be running a new plastic main down William Street to replace an old two inch steel. Over the last couple of years, we've had some leaks up there that we had to fix, and the steel's main is probably to a point where it probably needs to be replaced, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna replace it with plastic. And we have had our back machine up there, probably last day or two, vacuuming out all the utilities that we're gonna have to bore under. I think they said there was 36 sewer laterals we had to vac. I guess a lot of the old, at that time, a lot of the old sewer laterals just got cut off, hard telling where at, so, and they're still hooked into the main, so it's gonna take probably two or three days of vacuuming up there to locate all the utilities before we do bore a new plastic main in there. So that's underway, I think we're gonna do that probably second week in June, we got it scheduled. With the new regulations in the gas, we're not allowed to have a local company do the boring for us, so we gotta hire USDI out of Illinois to come over with their boring machine, pay their travel, pay their, a lot higher rate, do what?
What's the reason for that?
Stupid, uh, I U R C said before, you had to have a, one of our gas people that was qualified to be with the boring crew, the person that's actually doing the boring, you know, they'd pull in the pipe, there's no way connected to our system, doesn't have gas on it, and whenever they get done boring in, we pressure test it to make sure nothing got damaged when they do it, but now I U R C requires that the actual person on the boring machine is operator qualified, has a, their own plan with the state, so it's just a lot, and they gotta go through all the testing. So, we even argued the fact that they're not anywhere near our, they're not dealing with our live gas, they're just pulling in a, a gas line, and we have somebody there on our, from our crew, watching over the operations, and so, still don't matter. So now we gotta have USDI come over from Illinois to do our boring, so now we're trying to group our boring projects, so we're gonna come over, instead of boring for one project, we got, you know, a whole day's worth. There is a, there is a gas line that goes to a house on Geiger Street that actually, the service comes up in the driveway and goes over to the house, goes down to the meter, it's an old steel, and actually it's, I could have a picture of it, but we're gonna have to cut the road, we're gonna have to bore in on the other side of the house with a plastic service line, 'cause there is a leak there, and it's all concreted driveway, I guess when it was put in 50 years ago, it was a rock driveway maybe, but it's a trip hazard, it's a, I think cars almost run over it when they pull in their driveway, and if they'd busted off, it'd be hard to get to. So, we were, we're gonna have to have a, probably RG come in and, into the house and pipe out the other side of the house, when we run our new service line, that's the only way we can replumb the line to the house, so that's gonna be in with the, when they bore William Street.
Do these regulations require, are, are these the same when you just dig, dig the lines in? As opposed to boring them? I mean, can, can your own crew dig it, dig your line in, or they have to have a disinterested party from somewhere?
We gotta dig it in.
Dig it in too?
We gotta dig it in. And we gotta be there.
I know, but do you, can you, can you, can, can your, your crew actually dig in your own lines? If you put a main in, could you dig in the main as opposed to, I mean, it's more, I know it's.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
What?
We can.
You can dig in a line, but you can't bore in a line?
No. Well, we can. We can do the boring, but directional bore? And you gotta be trained and run the boring machine.
We don't have one, but I'm saying.
And we don't have a boring machine. They're very expensive and, you know, I don't think it'd be worth putting the money out there for a boring machine.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah. I was gonna say.
That was the same.
Yeah. I mean, we could get on the boring sheen, machine and do it, but we're not trained in it. And somebody else don't probably want us on our, their boring machine in case something gets broke, then who's gonna pay?
I get it. Second thing I just recalled, it's maybe a wrong meeting, maybe this is a, you know, board of public works meeting, but you said you crossed 36 sewer laterals?
That's what, one of the crew members from the sewer department, he went up and camered it. So there was a lot of sewer laterals that wasn't capped off at the main. They're still stubbed out, I guess.
My question is, within the interest of reducing infiltration into the sanitary sewer, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't we wanna investigate that?
To?
I mean, have the, have the wastewater guys investigate all the ones that are not going anywhere?
It'd be time consuming. I'd probably be up to the wastewater superintendent.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. They should be capped off or not used, cap them off? I mean, we spend an enormous amount of money trying to deal with infiltrated, you know, water gutter drains and old lines, old laterals that don't go anywhere and it sounds like you got all of these exposed at this point.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I said we're gonna spend two or three days up here just backing out, finding where they're all at. You got gas lines, water line, tap lines, sewer laterals, and telephone, cable. But we gotta expose every one of them before we bore.
It just.
So we're gonna be the time to have Brad Housen guys up there.
I can't give, I can't really direct you to do that, I don't think, but I guess I can, but I can't, I can't direct Brad Coomer to do it.
We can bring it up, board of public works and state committee, obviously, if we brought up.
I mean, since they're already, they've done half the work, you've done half the work for them.
Well, I told you there's 36 sewer laterals. I thought there was only 10 houses on that block.
I know. You're talking about Williams Street, right?
Yeah, William Street.
There's not 36 houses on it.
Didn't we like pay a lot of money for meters to find out where the flow is coming from, so?
Yeah, this seems like an opportune time to help ourselves.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too.
Typically, the sanitary sewers run down the middle of the street or one side of the street. And so when homes are demolished, rather than digging up the street, they used to just cap it at the right.
At the sidewalk or?
So they don't have to dig up the street.
Years ago, I mean.
So if you're gonna require them to go in and cap that at the main, then they're gonna have to dig up the street and all those locations. Just because it's capped off outside of the main doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be a source of inflow, infiltration. It could be, but it's not necessarily, so. One way of determining that is to smoke test that section of the main.
Yeah, whatever they, yeah, whatever they use. They used to use smoke. I don't know what they use, whether it's still there, so.
But, yeah, it, it would be costly, very time consuming and costly to dig up every one of those stubbed out mains to the street, cap it off at the main, and then repave.
And I would say that main's probably that old clay. I'm gonna say that's probably that old clay main.
Um, yeah, I think that was all, all that was allowed till a certain point.
I mean, you're talking houses that were 60 years ago, 70 years ago. Probably all clay tile up there.
Something we can bring up before public works, just see what Brad says about it.
And we're undergoing gas audits this week. Had, today ended two full days. They got another full day tomorrow. That was just on one area, one audit, took two days, 26 pages. It was over the O and N manual, operations and maintenance. They go over all the records. We gotta show them all. Kim and Greg's been involved in that and it's been going real good these two full days. Cause they look at our mapping system that we have in our crew rooms, the physical. They've got on our computer and seen all the work that Kim has done and Greg, entering everything into the computer. You can hit a tab and it'll show you when it was put in. Anything you wanna know about that service, it's on that, it's in the computer. So they're really impressed with that, so. It's been going real good. They got another day tomorrow, full day. Then they're gonna come back in September and for another two or three days to do some more audits. So it's all, it was three people there from the state today, today and yesterday. It's gonna be two tomorrow. Like I say, they're gonna come back in September and for a couple more days, but it's going real well. Been doing an excellent job. Any questions on the gas? The electric, replaced all the poles on 13th Street from Chestnut to the Eye Doctor that is on 13th. They finished pulling in the new wire, so 13th Street is all done. They just finished up today running underground from that short Geiger Street three-phase cabinet we got there. And we put that in when 14th Street was put in, probably 20 years ago. They trenched to the east, to the edge of the Arby's property line, put another three-phase cabinet in there in case somebody buys the property on the little patch of woods there.
The joining woods, the joining line?
The joining, so. In the future, we got access for there. So we're ready for Arby's. Whenever they're ready for their service, we'll trench over and install the electric service. So you finished that up today. They rent, rent well, they gotta sell the conduit, so now all we're gonna do is pull the wire in and terminate the ends. And then they replaced the corner pole, 4th Street and Van Buren, just right up here with a steel pole. I do have a picture.
That's pretty interesting.
Uh, the pole was half gone at the base. It was an old wooden pole. That is our main line that feeds the main east part of Huntingburg Airport, St. Henry. It's a main line. We are erecting a steel pole there, putting the steel in place. Just avoid it's all involved when we do replace a main line. As you can see, we got a small dump truck, the vac machine, the digger truck. Both big bucket trucks are there. One of the bucket trucks, we have an apparatus that lifts the lines up, moves them over, and the lines are still hot. We set the pole, we move the lines back over, lower them down, tighten them back in. So that pole's all done. It's a steel one. Like I say, it's a main line. This just shows you what's all involved when we gotta replace the main line pole. So in case of a storm, you know, just to replace this one, it takes our whole crew, cause we haven't got a very big crew. Just to show you the pole and the involvement.
That line comes right out of the substation?
Yeah, straight out of the substation. Like I say, it's the main, main line. Let's see. And then they, they put three new services in at Hunter's Crossing. And then N Doc called and I guess they're getting ready to put streetlights or stoplights at 14th and 231. We had two streetlight poles that were right in the way, so we had to go out and remove them and remove the foundation that they were sitting on. So once them streetlight poles or the stoplight standards are put in, we'll probably put a couple of streetlights that are like at Sunset and 231 that attach to the steel poles. So we did remove them. Then attached is quotes for transformers. Over the last probably several months, we've gone through a lot of pad mount transformers. Chestnut Gardens, Quality Inn, OFS, which is a former Carrickel building. Hunter's Crossing, Arby's, Beehive Apartments. So our inventory's gone down on the pole, of the pad mount transformers. So I do have the quotes. With the lowest being from Empa at $68,369. With the highest being $80,026. And the quote there's got the amount and the voltage. Half of them are the single phase, the other half are the three phase, that we're gonna have to build our inventory back up. And that is one of my capital expenditure items that I'll go over in just a minute here.
Are these transformers like all the same companies that are just different companies you buy from? They manufactured from the same places or different?
Different brands or different.
Yeah, okay. Same specs, same ones, maybe?
Yeah, ones, they got Cooper and they got Armco, ABB, General Electric.
We try to stay with a similar brand so we can swap between locations?
Actually, the Empa, they, they have the brand that we usually buy, Armco.
So do we have to have approvals by that?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna take a motion to approve? Motion approved by Mr. Ware.
I'll save it.
Thank you by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it.
And the last thing, the page that has the capital expenditures that I gave you a couple of months ago. Kind of revised it a little bit. Each time I bring a capital expenditure project to you, I will give you an update on the list. Starting off with the gas department. Originally I had the two-ton estimated at 80. We decided to nurse it another year or two. It's a 1995 model, so it's 26 years old. I think we can squeeze maybe another year or two out of it and with the vehicles, as you can see in the car lots that.
Shortage.
Yeah, it may take you a year to get it, but if you order it, but we think we can nurse it another couple of years. So actually, I took that off the list. So you can see gas department has a zero now. On the electric, the Skata system is still in the early goings. I'm still working with a company on that. Smart meters, kinda got it and kinda on hold right now. I wanna see what the water department get with you on. Whenever they're gonna finish up, then I can start buying some electric smart meters. So that's kinda in limbo right now. The pad mount transformers, I had 80 and we come in at 68, so I'm saving a little there. The overhead primary wire, I'm gonna push that back till 2022. And that takes a full experienced crew to run long, like quarter mile at a time, um, and keeping everything in power. So we're gonna move out, I'm gonna move out to 2022. I've replaced it with steel poles that were, gave an approval, given approval last council meeting. And that come in at 47.9. And then the pickup truck that we approved several months ago, come in at 31 and had 34, so. I'm just still below the projected amount that I gave you. So we got three items down. We got two to go.
Were you able to get the truck?
What truck's that?
I mean, are you, are you able to get this pickup truck?
Back when we ordered it, it wasn't as, I guess, what severe, the shortage wasn't as bad. They projected September. We'll see if we get it in September. So I don't know.
That was my question. Did you ever got it?
Good, no, we ain't got it.
I see we haven't got it yet.
That was the question.
But when we had it, when we, when we ordered it, it wasn't such a problem, I guess.
Delay now, yeah.
But we're running under the projected capital expenditure for the electric. I looked to save on the Skata and smart meters are kind of a question mark on how many I can put in without overloading the billing department.
I commend you for trying to balance all this here.
So any questions on the electric?
The smart meters, how many different groups of packages would you be doing, like four or five, like a quarter of a month?
I can do them all in two months if billing department let me. If Deb would let me.
Yeah, yours, you don't dig yours up.
No, it's five, it's probably five minutes you can change a meter at, so.
What is the challenge in billing? What, why is there a challenge with that?
Just.
It just takes time to.
To sign the number?
To get all that information input into.
Gotta take an old read, you gotta, I assume you put a certain serial number or?
We fill out the paperwork. Paperwork's gonna take longer to fill out than replacing the meter.
I'm betting so too.
For how long do you project that it will take then?
As long as the billing department will make that. The billing department will make that determination. Like I say, I can put them in, I can be done in three months, two months.
There's a benefit to getting them in quicker. Maybe it makes sense to hire some.
Yeah, we're gonna, once the water department finishes up what they need to be finished up on.
Yeah.
Then we'll get with the billing department, get it planned together.
Okay.
Jerry, what are you gonna finish up on that?
Well, like he said, Debbie likes about 12 a day.
Okay.
With all their normal day-to-day business going on, they're, they're all pretty slummed up there.
I understand.
Yeah. So I gotta, we gotta, we gotta work with them and.
Needs to be round tabled and.
Yeah, that's why we'll have a sit-down and get it planned together. We'll follow the plan.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions?
Alright, thanks.
Yep, alright, thank you.
Chief Fars, don't leave.
He's running, he's running.
I'm gonna tell you something, I can't do this. I can't do it. Yeah.
I think your job would do it, but you know, he said the heck with that.
Yeah.
Back just about three more inches. It's on your best side anyway.
I have come to the council today to add three guys to the reserve program slash auxiliary, basically I'll start out as auxiliary first. I think we've got around six now. We can have 15. There were more, of course, like it always happens and they've been down, but they've done, everything is taken to this far to, to get here. And just a little background in each one of them. And I may get this, this messed up a little bit. Emmanuel, you go by Manny?
Yeah.
Mercado?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know, wait and stand up the way you see. He's a Jasper residence. He graduated Jasper High School with honors. He's got a bachelor's degree in, from IU in law enforcement with a minor in Spanish. He's on the dean's list with honors at that time. Fluent in English and Spanish and works at Sternberg's. So we're happy to, you know, have him come on here. We definitely need to be able to have the fluent of English and Spanish, so. Seeing that happen more and. George, or, yeah, George Dubon. Go ahead and stand up there, please. He's Ferdinand residence. I think you may be just out in a county or something, ain't you? Yeah. He's graduated Southridge High School. He's working on his bachelor's degree in law enforcement at Vincennes University. Fluent in English and Spanish. He works at U-Ballers.
Competing, competing.
The last one.
Different kinds of trucks.
Yeah. Yeah, keep it together. The last one is Jonathan Blocker. The last one is Jonathan Blocker. He's a Huntingburg resident, graduated Southridge High School. He's got a associate's degree in science and law enforcement from Vincennes University. He works in Winklers and Dale, so
Not the Beers? R. Rucks, are you?
Yeah. But yeah, I'm here today to go through the process of getting them added on to the reserve through the council and then, of course, that goes to the board, so.
We need a motion to accept the reserves?
If you've got any questions for them, you can ask them.
Is the process to add them to a list or?
Yeah, I think you add them to the list on the Board of Public Works and you approve them on the list of reserves and then the Board of Public Works officially appoints them.
I'd make a motion to approve them for the list of reserves?
Sounds good.
And to follow Biller?
Steve?
I'll second that motion. Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, it's your first step on the way.
We're hoping down the road, maybe we can get them to get on the department.
There you go.
That's the hope, that's what the
That's the goal.
Reserve and all billary for, so. But yeah, we haven't done this for a while, so it's
So with three, these gentlemen are going to make six total?
Uh, well, I think we had five or six, so this should be eight or nine right now, so. Like I said, we can have up to 15, we just don't, we haven't gotten near there for a long time. It's hard to get there, but that's all I have.
Appreciate it, thanks, chief. Welcome, guys.
Congratulations, welcome, guys. April, you're a
Hello. Mind your own.
Sure, sure.
Hello, April.
Hi. How's everybody doing?
Great.
Did you miss me?
Twisted mornings.
It's been a month, huh? Still no umbrellas. Okay, the Indiana Department of Transportation in conjunction with the Indiana Rural Transit Assistant Program developed a template for a preventative maintenance plan. The template will aid in uniforming among 5311 transit system plans and streamline the compliance review process. Maintenance plans ensure vehicle reliability and safety. Some examples of our maintenance plan is that we do a daily vehicle inspection every day in the morning before we start our routes and then again in the afternoon when we're finished. We have vehicle lifts inspected by a certified mechanic after a specific number of cycles that's used so many times, then we have it inspected by a certified mechanic. I can take it down to Evansville to have that done. And then the city maintenance does routine servicing and maintenance. If more serious warranty issues come up, the vehicle's taken to either Rex or Ford or Sternberg's. NDOT has asked that the preventative maintenance plan be approved by each system's governing board, which, that's you guys, so that's all I have.
Is this new?
It is.
The first year we've done this?
Yes.
I thought I hadn't recognized it before.
Yeah, they just keep sending us more new things to put in place, templates like the safety policy that I did last month. This is, you know, just another one that they're putting in place. And I think it's going to help for when they do their auditing so that we upload this on Blackcat and then they'll be able to just go in there and everybody across the board in Indiana has the exact same template, you know, that they're, but they add their own, you know, like us, we do our, we have a daily inspection sheet that our drivers, I'm sure they all have them, they might not be the exact same, but similar, so.
Yeah, so I noticed as I was reading through that big, long thing
I know, right.
There seems to be a lot of, check, check the boxes like to start the day. Would you say our drivers are already doing those things or most of those things and now we're just kind of making it uniform with what the state wants?
That's exactly what's going on, yeah.
So not really adding new work?
Right. Jackie actually attached our inspection sheet. We have inspection sheet for 75, 78, all three vans, 76, the smaller van, of course, it's different, but she attached all three of those and included it with this plan, so.
So basically, we just need a motion to approve the preventative maintenance plan from the Transit Department.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Bowns.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Ware, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to let you introduce the library thing.
Yeah, I think we do have some representatives of the library board, Huntingburg Public Library here tonight. Several years ago, the legislature changed the law with regard to budgeting and additional appropriations by units whose governing bodies are not elected. And if your budget or your additional appropriation meets a certain parameter, then you have to go before an elected body. In the case of Huntingburg Public Library, it's the common council. And they have to conduct a procedure to approve an additional appropriation and eventually approve that additional appropriation. The same way with budgets, if the budget exceeds a certain parameter, the library board has to come before the council, the common council of City Huntingburg to conduct a public hearing and to approve the budget. They're before you tonight because they, the library board has adopted a resolution requesting you to approve an additional appropriation, a total additional appropriation of $1,800,000. And so the procedure would be for you to introduce an ordinance approving that additional appropriation and then conducting a public hearing on that additional appropriation at your next meeting, June 8. It's going to be the meeting
At 5:30.
At 5:30. But there are members of the library here tonight that might answer some questions for you concerning what this $1,800,000 is needed for. It's not in their, it's not in their regular annual budget, so that's why they need to do an additional appropriation. So anybody want to speak to that?
Absolutely. Happy to. My name's Christopher Newen, I'm on the library board. And this is Lisa McWilliams. Lisa is our library director. Lisa lives directly across the street, right beside Kathy Letts' house, directly across from the city office. I actually live a block away on the corner of Third and Jackson, across from the Kisslings, great neighbors. The library board consists of myself, it's an appointed board, which is why we are approaching the common council. We no longer have the authority to do that, which is exactly what Phil said. At one time, we did have control of our own money, but we no longer do. So the library board consists of myself, Casey Lindeman, Paul Nycom, Lauren Tanner, Melissa Beglin, Mary Jean McFerrin Shoemaker, as well as, who am I missing? Carolyn Brewer. So that makes up the library board. Essentially, what has happened is over the past 15 or so years, the library has been real diligent in saving money and we have been putting money back into our operating fund as well as our rainy day fund predominantly. We don't have a capital improvement budget fund like a school corporation would have or the city has. And we are now to the point to where we want to make some improvements. So we are here asking the council to get, let us have access to the money that we have been putting away. We're not here to complain, we're not here asking for money from the council. We're simply asking you to review what we have in front of, that we presented so that you could pass a resolution or whatever the process is, because I know it's new and we're all learning it, to get us access to that money.
So you're basically just wanting us to give you permission to use your money?
You got it, yeah. It's pretty nice when you're not coming up to ask for anything else, but
Yeah, that's pretty nice.
That is the process.
The idea behind this was the Indiana legislature about five years ago determined that some of these boards, including the airport authority and the library, they're not elected and so they're not answerable to any
Anybody.
Any voters. And so if they're going to be doing budgets that meet certain parameters, are expending more money than they budgeted, they should have to have the approval of an elected official. And in the library board's case, it's the common council. But again, the process would be to introduce this ordinance approving, and I think it's in your board act, the ordinance approving the additional appropriation, set it for a public hearing, and after the public hearing, then you'd adopt the ordinance on June 8, if you see fit.
So first, we need a motion to
Introduce.
Introduce the ordinance.
Introducing number?
Yes.
IB 202118.
I'll make a motion to introduce.
I'll second it.
Oh, okay. Wait for me to finish. Okay. All in favor? Now I need a motion to set up the public hearing for the eighth at 5:30 P.M.
Make a motion to set up the public hearing at 8:00 at 5:30 P.M.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds good. Appreciate it.
We will see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, you're up, you want to talk about the no excess value?
I just wanted to tell you, well, I put on the board pack the required resolutions from the redevelopment commission that indicate that there's no assessed value that they want, or that they're going to use it all and that there's none that will be available to any other taxing unit. So you can look at those, they're all the same, so we have seven allocation areas, seven resolutions were done, one for each allocation area in the TIPS.
Can we do that all at once and just approve of all?
It's not, it's just, it's just me giving to you to review, to
So we don't have to make any motions?
It's informational, yeah. The clerk charge is required every year to report what the redevelopment commission has decided. Again, the Indiana legislature has determined that if, hey, look, if your allocation areas have excess assessed valuation, they're not going to use, they have no plans for, it should be released back to the other taxing authorities. And this is just a determination that each of our allocation areas, there are plans for the increment that's being captured, the assessed valuation that's being captured. And there's no surplus to be released to the other taxing authorities.
We got a use for that, we're going to use it.
So thank you for that information.
And that's all I have.
Any other items to bring up for the council?
I got one for Tom. That 1.8 million for the library, do they have their own separate account that's all sitting in?
It's their money.
I mean, is it in the general fund or?
It's theirs. None of our money at all.
Okay.
They're a separate taxing entity, I guess.
Yeah, they are. And you're just the hearing body, the body that will hear the additional appropriation request and approve it. And then it gets, then that approval gets sent to the Department of Local Government Finance and they have to certify that there's sufficient funds there to spend it and then they can spend it.
They haven't spent any money for a long time. Long here.
They're very good stewards.
They're not a filth, filthy, the county libraries either.
No, they're not, it's a separate taxing district.
Any other things to bring up?
I have something that I'd like to talk about. Through the COVID-19 pandemic, we adopted some methods that have actually, that a lot of the council members have actually embraced regarding remote electronic participation in meetings. We've been inquiring about how to make that permanent, how to allow us to continue to utilize like Zoom or other methods to participate in meetings when we're traveling, which is the case for several, several of our council members. And so in some of our inquiring, we've seen that the state has actually acted on this and they've passed some ordinance, I guess. And in reading through it, it says that the governing body shall adopt a written policy establishing the procedures that apply to members' participation in a meeting by an electronic means of communication. So what I'd like to throw out there is that we have, our council, have a conversation about what those, what the state rules are and how we might adopt a, an ordinance that would govern how we would use those remote electronic tools that we now have available so that members, the members of the council that are traveling would still be able to plug into these meetings and participate when they might not be able to be here live. I don't know what, Phil, what would be required there, but
Yeah, it's actually just a resolution. To clarify things a little bit, as long as there is a state declared public emergency or even a local declared public emergency, you may, you may meet remotely and so long as everybody can see and hear everybody who's participating and the public can see and hear all the members of the governing body that's participating. But when there's no public emergency, the law has now changed, affected immediately, that if you choose, you may during a normal course, conduct some, your meeting in part digitally or remotely, at least the majority have to be there in person, but other than the minority could participate by remote access. Again, it has to be a platform in which you can all see each other and hear each other and the general public can see each other and hear all the members. There's a limit on how many consecutive meetings you can attend remotely. I think it's two consecutive meetings unless due to health issues or some other issues, you can't. There's some other parameters that you'd have to meet. But certainly, I could come up with a resolution that would detail some of these things that would meet the law and you could add more requirements if you wanted, but I would just suggest the bare minimum and then you could add what you wanted to if you want me to prepare something.
Yeah. What would we, what would we?
I think as long as we have a quorum here, three people, we can have two electronically, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Is that right?
I'm thinking that somebody will spell out.
That'd be the minimum.
I think we should follow the minimum guidelines and do we have to explicitly state what kind of electronic means or would that be up to our IT guy?
Yeah, you don't have to put it in the resolution, but in the minutes, you have to, you have to reveal what platform was used by the participating members who are participating digitally or remotely and that that platform was available to the general public.
So we could change, so we could change platforms as long as it's a publicly available platform?
That's correct. So whatever platform you use has to also be available to the general public. Now, the general public don't have to be able to actually speak.
Just have to be able to watch.
Just be able to watch and observe, observe what's going on.
Do
So
Does that require a motion or can we just ask you to do that?
If you want me to, just instruct me to proceed with a draft resolution and I will.
I would like for you to, the other council members agree?
And then we could, once you do that, then we can
June 8.
June 8 at 5:30 P.M.
I have to do my birthday, by the way, but that's okay.
So we're having a public hearing. Hear you, hear you.
We need that publicly?
Afterwards?
It's not, right now.
It's a pub meeting.
On June the 8th, 5:30. If there's no other business, I'll entertain another motion.
I'm going to turn to the floor.
Anything else from the floor? No?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody.